Testing one, two, three. This will be the October 18th, 2017 City Council Regular Meeting.
Everybody ready? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order. A regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, October 18th, 2017, approximately 7:00 PM. Would you please join Councilman Brimer for a moment of silence and a pledge.
You did good, man. Please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you if you'll join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, united in the resolve of liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to Agenda Item Three, which is Citizens' Comments. This is for non-Agenda items. So the floor is open for Citizens' Comments for non-Agenda items. If you could please come forward, state your name, and...
My name's Susan Webb. I'm Satellite Beach resident, and I'm not going to be here next weekend, so I thought I'd come out this evening and tell you. I know that there's a lot going on where people are having sewers back up into their houses, and we're telling people right now to restrict water use for the sewers. There are still some folks in our area that are still using their sprinkler systems, and there's a lot going on. I just don't think that the message is getting out to everybody, and I'm wondering if there's a way that I might be able to help you guys organize the rest of the community to get the message out to the people who really aren't paying attention. There was a point, I live in North Waterway, and there was a point where I went door-to-door in North Waterway and actually knocked on everybody's door because our lighthouse was crumbling, and we needed to rebuild that. I don't know if you recall that. It's been a couple of years ago. But I went door-to-door, and I talked to everybody in the North Waterway area. I'm sure I can talk to a couple of people. I know a lot of people in the community, having been involved in the community, although you might not know me. But there's got to be a way that we can get the message out to more people to limit their water use, and just want to let you know that I'm, you know, there are resources out there, so.
Thank you very much. Courtney, you want to...
Well, I can, I have an item on that under my report, but I can do that now if you want to.
Oh, no.
I'll have a seat.
She'll do it under Report, and then she'll carry on the conversation.
Okay, I didn't realize that was on there. All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your offer to help out. So much appreciated.
Yes, thank you very much. Citizens' Comments still open? Here, and then close that, come back to Council comments.
The only comment that I have to make tonight is that I spent some time today with Sandy Fein. Got to talk to her for quite an extended period of time, and she wanted me to express, and I quote, "Her sincere appreciation and gratitude to the City of Satellite Beach for everybody that turned out and honored Gabe," and she was glad to see everybody, and it was really very touching to her to have everybody there, so, end quote. So, family's very pleased, and they're just very thankful that you guys were there for them, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I was basically going to mention the same thing, that, you know, we lost a great friend, a great friend to the city, and Sunday was a sad day saying goodbye to Gabe. He's always been here for all of us, and, you know, I said Sunday, "He's probably been to more council meetings than most of the council people that have sat on this dais." And it's terrible that he's gone, and I'm glad that you've got to spend some time with Sandy. There was a great turnout on Sunday for his service and for the reception we had here at the Civic Center. That's all I have.
Well, last week, Courtney, the mayor, myself, we all did a fast fly-in to DC with the Florida League of Cities advocating for specifically some FEMA clawback issues and flooding, the National Flood Insurance Program, and a couple of other things. Got to pound the pavement and really, really learn a lot, and talk to some representatives, and it seems like they're all kind of behind our pleas. Other than that, just surviving the aftermath still of the hurricane. That's it.
Thank you. Yes, I did go to Washington, DC. I probably should get a Purple Heart Travel, one of its three women, but I will just kind of leave that.
We deserve an award. We deserve an award.
It was very interesting, though, meeting on the FEMA stuff, especially trying to get FEMA not to take these dollars back 10 years later. It would be a tremendous impact to cities' budgets, and so I think in most cases, we've talked to the representatives, they were really on the same page. And the flood insurance and floodplain stuff we talked about, and the mapping, I can say this, as much as people look and say, "Why did you do all this sustainability stuff?" We're light-years ahead of what even they're getting information up at in Washington. When we told them we have a brand-new floodplain map, they looked at us like, "Really? Because we still have to do ours." So I think that was, it's turned out to be a very good thing that we took the initiative on it, and hopefully it helps us in the long run, and people look at the city and go, you know, from Washington, going, "You've got to look at them. They did it." And it makes a difference. It makes a big difference, so. Anyway, any other comments? Okay, thank you. City Managers' Report, Courtney.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. On Sunday, this Sunday, October 22nd, Surfside Elementary will have their second annual Sprint for Shade 5K, starting at the David R. Schechter Center at 7:00 AM. And this event supports the PTO and costs $20 for the 5K, $15 for the one-miler, or $25 for the Sprint for Shade Challenge, and you can register for that under the Run Sign Up link that I put on my page. Saturday, October 28th, PAL is hosting a garage sale fundraiser from 8 to 1:00 PM at the David R. Schechter Center, and you can call over there to donate. Just a reminder that Founder's Day will be Saturday, November 4th, so put that on your calendar, the, what?
Founder's Day?
Yeah.
Saturday, isn't it?
Saturday.
Saturday, November 4th. And that theme is 50s, right? Yeah, 50s theme, so we'll expect, you know, the leather jackets and the white t-shirts. We received a card from the Sealy family thanking the fire department for their continued support during the hard time, and that's in my report. We also received a thank-you letter from Gerja Shukel, thanking Melanie Drink for checking in on her before and after the hurricane. Tomorrow, we will be, or I will be, and I believe Suzanne's going to be with me, a meeting with FPL's president and a vice president on their solar initiatives. We've got a call today for us to go to that event, largely because we are working so hard on our solar initiatives and partnering with them, so they would like to meet with us on that. We are done with our first pass of vegetative debris removal from the hurricane. We will be, I think we'll be asking the county to release the second pass and just move into a waste management, back into waste management collecting scenario, since we don't have a lot of vegetative debris left over. We are still picking up fence debris, so that's still out there, so you'll see those trucks. We are still waiting on a FEMA reimbursement from Matthew, so we're in our second hurricane with no FEMA funds. That was part of our initiative when we went to Washington DC, is to make sure that our federal representatives understood that we still haven't received that reimbursement. So we're making a lot of headway on the debris. We're just not getting a lot of headway on the finance side of it, but we'll keep you up to date on that. Regarding the sewer discharges and the sewer utility, the, after the discharges from the hurricane, I contacted the county manager and had a meeting with him and the utility director on that issue, and asked that they make a presentation to the Citizens Oversight Committee for the Lagoon, Sabre Lagoon Plan. That presentation's going to occur on Friday, October 20th, at 8:30 in the morning, at the, in the Vieira Complex in the Florida Room, Building C. That meeting's televised, and I put that on Facebook. That is on our Facebook page, and the link, you can click on that link and watch those meetings live. So if you can't make it physically, you can at least listen to it and watch the meeting. It is a public meeting, so they will be presenting the why they have to do what they have to do right now, what they're doing to improve the sewer utility system currently, and then we'll be talking about a potential program that we'll be working with them, looking at smoke testing areas of Satellite Beach for the resident side, where, you know, you have, we have sections of the community that's already been replaced on the county side, but there's still high leaks happening at that lift station, so we're looking at doing a smoke test to see how many leaks are between the county system and the resident, so that drain pipe between the lateral and the resident. And that, after we do that, we're hoping to come up with a program that we can present to the Lagoon Tax Committee that will be piloted here in Satellite Beach, so we'll keep you up to date on that. The other side of that is the fact that it's very difficult to get this word out, and the county has agreed to start doing alerts, where City of Melbourne did that, and they're here. They did an alert when they had their water, when they had the request for, after the hurricane, to conserve water, they put out an alert through the reverse 911 system, and we asked the county to do the same thing, because we realized that most people were only getting the message through Facebook, and if you didn't, if you weren't on Facebook, and then after the hurricane, a lot of people didn't have Internet, so we asked them to do the same thing. They did that last time. But we realized as well, a lot of people aren't signed up for it because they have cell phones, and you have to actually physically sign up for it if you have a cellphone. So we were going to look at, you know, how do we get that word out to get signed up? And so I like your door-to-door, because that's one of the best ways to get that out, or a direct mailer, and so we're looking at those options. So those are some of the issues that we're starting to talk about here in the city. The other issue is that it's a beachside problem, so it's not just the City of Satellite Beach that needs to conserve water. It's also in New Harbor Beach, and in Atlantic, in the City of Melbourne, and in incorporated areas, so, you know, how can we work with those entities to start getting that word out, and maybe we do a mass mailer together as a partnership? So thank you for asking to help, because I think that's great, and you want to, you've got to come up here. Schools are a great resource for that. If you can find schools in those districts, and then contact the PTO person, and then have them put that out to the PTO. We need help getting these words out, part of the people that don't have Facebook or that don't have, that aren't... So maybe I can get your info before we leave tonight? Yes, sure. And then we can... I'll leave it here, because I have to leave early, so thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that.
And thank you very much for your effort. Appreciate it.
Courtney, I talked to Matt Reed today, and Matt was telling me about this new program that the school board has implemented on notifying people, and, you know, there's a resource right there, I mean...
And we would just have to see if they're willing to use that resource for non-school issues, and I've seen some reluctance in that, so, but we can look into it.
To me, it affects the schools that are beachside, because they're part of a whole scenario that's playing out, and I think, you know, Matt's pretty receptive.
You don't have to sell me on it. I'm not going to give you...
Yeah, Matt's pretty receptive to listening to whatever we've got. The other thing, too, is when you talked about the lift station, is it a specific lift station we're looking at, or just all of it?
We're looking at all the lift stations. What they're going to try to do is focus on the lift stations that are the leakiest as part of, like, trying to focus in on one area of Satellite Beach, because looking at a long-term program, even if you're paying only 20% of the cost for replacement, it's still a pretty big cost, considering how many houses are in that one little area, so we have to define that and come up with a pilot. And so, once we do the smoke test, we'll figure out how big the problem is, and then come up with a program, if it's even warranted, because that may show that it's not a problem, but we feel like it's probably going to be a problem.
Lift stations are there in Satellite Beach, do we know?
I think we had 16, if I'm not mistaken.
16, okay.
Or 16 beachside, I'm sorry. Beachside, yeah. Beachside, yeah.
Any further info, Courtney?
That's it.
Council, any questions? Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, Presentation by the City of Melbourne Ward Utilities Department on their work in Satellite Beach. Please come up, I think, right here at the mics, or you can stand here, whatever is convenient for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, there we go, as we warm up. Hello, I'm Ralph Reichelsberger, the Public Works and Utilities Director for the City of Melbourne. We've been invited, certainly hope, in regards to giving you a little update in regards to our water system and the projects that we have going on here. From my understanding, we've had a number of surveyors out here, and some utility markings done, and some residents were kind of curious what's going on, so they've been contacting all your folks, and I thought, we've been invited, this is a good time to let you know what's going on in the City of Melbourne, as specifically as it relates to the Satellite Beach area. I'm just going to give a little bit of history or a little bit of information regarding our system. We have approximately 58,000 utility accounts in the water system. This is the equivalent population of about 150,000 customers. A big number that we normally relate to in regards to our average daily demand, we're pumping out about 16.6 million gallons a day in regards to the distribution into the system. Some other numbers that may be of interest is the maximum day demand, about 19.5 MGD, and our peak hour demand of approximately 24.8 MGD. Our water is produced from two, from two treatment facilities located on Lake Washington. Our surface water treatment plant uses an active flow process that's capable of producing 20 million gallons a day, and then on the other side, we have a reverse osmosis water treatment plant that takes groundwater from the upper Floridian, Floridian, excuse me, and can produce about 5 million gallons a day. In our distribution system, we have four booster pump stations, six ground storage tanks, one elevated storage tank, with a total storage capacity of about 15 million gallons for the system. And if you're ever flying over our area, this is what our plant looks like at the end of Lake Washington Boulevard, Lake Washington Lake. In regards to our distribution system, we have approximately 900 miles that we maintain, about 150 miles transmission, 730 distribution, and a few extra miles of 2-inch. In Satellite Beach, the components that pertain to this community is five miles of transmission mains and 52 miles of distribution mains. Now, fortunately, you've got a printout of an 11-by-17 or a little bit bigger sheet. This is your water distribution system as it relates to Satellite Beach. It's a tough drawing, I know, to see, but that's, the original size of that is four feet by three feet, and I rolled up a copy and left one on the table for future reference for city use, so you can actually read it. And while I am here, you want to know what's going on. We have a project called Central Satellite Beach Water Main Replacement. It consists of a number of phases. We are currently under design under Phase One and anticipated to go out for bids starting sometime in January of 2018. After the completion of that, and while that's going on, we will start the design of the Phases Two, Three, and Four. We anticipate that we will let that out as one project for construction, and it costs approximately about $2.2 million, and we've got a request in regards, for our five-year CIP for that to take place. Also, in conjunction to specific projects, we have a miscellaneous 2.4 6-inch pipe replacement program, where we go around and hit various communities and replace the water lines there, especially the old galvanized type material. This year, or coming up in 2018, we've got Bonny Court, Hedgecock Court, Colonial Court, Endeavour Court scheduled to be replaced on those streets with their water mains. There, we just shoot the underground, have an underground utility shoot the water main in, and we make the tie-in, and then we transfer the services over. It goes fairly quickly, and it's kind of disrupt, a little less disruptive in lieu Now, here's the little map that's a little tough to physically see, and for people that may be, you know, in the audience, want to know what we're talking about, we're basically talking from Park Avenue to, is it Casilla? 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 And then A1A to St. Patrick's. So we're looking at replacing all the water mains in that area there, and it's a pretty good project, pretty aggressive in regards to the community to address. And these are probably all the people that have been calling with the paint and the flags, because that's where we've been doing some of the surveying work already. With other planned projects that we have at the City of Melbourne that's going to have some effect to you so that you can be aware of, Canova Booster Station located on Wallace Road is currently going through a emergency generator and transfer switch project, design-build. It will be completed before the next hurricane season, and costs approximately $331,000. Another big project we're currently have under design is the Pioneta Causeway Water Main Construction Project. It's approximately $12 million anticipated cost in regards to construction, and that will be looping all the way over from about US 1 all the way over to approximately Patrick Air Force Base. Like I said, the project has been designed, and I've got a request in for funds in approximately the fiscal year 1819 for that to be constructed. That project, we're looking at going in conjunction with the City of Cocoa, so that they can have a line that will also parallel ours, so that they can serve the basin places north, and we're also looking at an emergency cross connection on Merritt Island for the people there and for the benefits of both systems. And in our system, we're looking at putting in a control device in regards to that will automatically kick in to close the line should an emergency happen to develop on its own. It will be able to sense it and be able to shut itself off in lieu of having to send people out. Ocean Boulevard, we're replacing the water main there. It's currently an up-sized project that we have scheduled, and also, you've probably seen our people around quite frequently with the annual fire hydrant maintenance program. We go around, check them, paint them, and make sure all the apparatus, the components of it work fine, and we also have an annual valve maintenance program, where we go out and exercise the valves to make sure that they are functioning. And I mentioned the annual pipe replacement that we have ongoing, as we hit all the communities with it, with the 2.4 6-inch. This is Ocean Boulevard. It is currently an 8-inch water main. We're going to be putting in a 12-inch high-density polyethylene pipe material into there, mostly directional bore, and it will improve the flows, because it'll have an effective rate of a 10-inch diameter pipe, so it'll have a huge benefit down here, especially when the Pioneta Causeway finishes its construction. The 2-inch galvanized water main replacements that I mentioned, we've already done some of those on the east side, Dever Court on Roosevelt Avenue, and the ones I mentioned previously are those on the left there that we got scheduled for this year. And just so you know who's been out there, so you know we have been working out here, the Ocean Spray Boulevard, 6-inch high-density polyethylene pipe from Cal Street to A1A, at a cost of approximately $200,000, that we were responsible for that. A new 16-inch isolation valve on Ocean Spray in A1A, that ends up costing us about $100,000. The 2-inch galvanized replaced on Charles Street, Jason Court, Carroll Court, Price Court, that was the one I mentioned before, we did under our 2.4 6-inch miscellaneous project. And then we're also out here, when the City of Satellite was working on Roosevelt Avenue, we had to do some water main locations there to, due to drainage conflicts, to make sure water could drain, so we participated in that. That's kind of in a nutshell, in regards to what's going on, so you knew who was out there working. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come out here and the invitation to let you know what's going on, and I'm available for any questions.
Quick question. I see here you have Phase One, Two, Three, Four of the, this particular...
Yes.
The wood sections of Satellite Beach.
Mm-hmm.
South of there, there's many blue marks on roads also.
Yeah, we are not limited to that area that we're working with. We're coordinating with your staff in regards to any potential road improvement type projects, and we have looked at, I think we've got three other areas we're looking at in regards to doing water main improvements.
Okay, so anywhere, because people are asking me, and their streets do not, it's not on this particular...
That's correct.
But they're south between these streets and the soda.
Yes.
And there's a lot of blue marks around, so they can pretty much be sure that where you see blue marks, there is going to be some kind of work possibly being done?
Yeah, it is most likely going to be some work done, but it's not necessarily water main. What those are, are construction companies that come in and will say they're going to be doing a project within a certain limits, and they call the Sunshine Group in regards, and we have, everybody in utilities has to come out and mark. In general, it would be us doing it, because we're interested in regards to making design. We've got, on our map of Satellite Beach, in my office, my staff's office, we have like three or four other areas that we're targeting in regards to doing projects.
Well, this is standard roads where there is no new construction. I mean, it's just the roadway.
Yeah.
And then the blue marks off, and I think, I mean, it was...
Yeah, and it very well could be us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. If you have any questions, please call my office, and we can let you know which ones we're also contemplating about, because our long-term plan is very dynamic.
One thing I would like to see happen is just from hearing back from residents, when you get near starting a phase in an area, can we somehow have the communications to where people who are living in that zone is going to know it's going to start the project? You know, whether you send a letter, or we do it from the city, so that, you know, I find that to be one of the issues. The last time, when people were seeing a lot of paint being spread around, our phones were ringing off the hook, and we couldn't answer the questions because we didn't have the information.
Correct. When we start surveying work, it can be in anticipation of construction activities that could still be two years out, and again, that's still, that can fluctuate, because what we're doing is obtaining all the data of what the existing infrastructure is, so the engineering firm that we've hired can do their design around the infrastructure to try to be less disruptive of those conflicts. So if you see those marks out there, and our surveyors are coming out, because that's what they're picking up to put, transfer to the plan, it can take two years, and sometimes those projects can even sit longer.
And that, to me, that's fine, I'm just saying, when it gets to the two-year mark and you're going to start, I think that's where we need to make sure we can answer the question.
We have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor in regards to the schedule of the activities, the schedule in regards to starting, completing, what tasks have to be completed before they move to the next one. We go through a permitting process with the city here. Satellite Beach in regards to that they're aware of what's going on, so more than happy to have those discussions.
Perfect. For any questions?
I have a question. First of all, Ralph, thank you very much for coming, because, you know, this gives us an idea of what's going on. I'm looking at the map here, and I'm looking where these mains are going. As they run alongside the road, are they on the, they're not under the road, they're adjacent to the road, is that what... Is that where these are going?
Well, I certainly hope that's where they're at, but they can be just about anywhere. It depends on when the construction activities took place. I'm not certain in regards to it was during our review with us because we have a standard template in regards. We like it off the edge of the road so that there's room to do maintenance without disturbing the road, causing that mix it. A lot less cost in regards to fixing those water mains, so.
So, when you go through, when you go down a street, you will physically be digging up the street or are you sliding?
We, our preferred method of construction is directional bore where we actually just dig a couple pits, shoot it through. This way, it's less disruptive for driveways, access points, sidewalks, et cetera.
That was where I was going because, you know, we will have our residents calling us when you start pulling up the pavers or driveways.
They would generally call us first. And so, yeah, because if they see our trucks out there and our contractor. Yeah, we try to be as less disruptive as we possibly can. The cost effectiveness, it's really worth it in regards to the restoration process.
Questions from council? Any other, I could have one other. Okay. Storm activity and electronic valves, is that what you're working on so that when water gets shut off during a storm or turned back on, that you don't need physically people to come out and throw down the valve?
Yeah, referring in regards to the isolation of a water system, it actually sets it up into two zones is the intent of what we will be doing. It's already in the design of the Pioneta Causeway and we're looking for the two other crossings in regards to having those put in. It is not necessary an electric type valve. It's a valve that can function in regards to the pressure difference that it detects and helps facilitate its closing. And they're, they're rather expensive, but it keeps people out of harm's way in regards to putting them in. And it takes, you may know from when we had Matthew, it takes us about 45 minutes to close the valve because it takes so many turns to get the valve to isolate the water main there. So, we are looking into those being placed in the system.
Right, thank you.
So, they will, that will be automated, the actual physical valve turning, or will a person still have to go out?
A person will not have to go out. It should, if they're designed correctly, functioning correctly, and that's what I really hope for, things to function correctly. Or I wouldn't have been in the mess back then. They will sense themselves and then start with the pressure difference, be able to close themselves.
And will you be notified somehow by that to where you can maybe notify?
Absolutely. We are, this year, another project that I didn't list in here that is going to have an impact in regards to the entire system is we're putting in remote sensors for pressure detections in regards to the whole system. There'll be about 100 sensors placed throughout the east side and mainland so we can tell what's going on in the system rather quickly instead of waiting on no radio communications that we have.
At this, any further comment? Let me open up for public comment.
Okay.
And then if there's questions from the public, you can help us with answer. I'd appreciate that, thank you. At this time, public comment on this agenda item, floor is open.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
Ralph, thanks. My many gentlemen are the total board's directors. We've had some hydrants changed out.
Do me a favor.
I was doing citizen thing. We've had some hydrants changed out recently that were ground, flushed to the ground. And all of the hydrants that are being replaced are a foot and a half higher than was there before. So, they're sticking out of the ground and we're getting calls. Is that the new norm or is, because when we asked, it was that, that's, the riser that was provided is difficult. Anyway, there was, there was some question about the validity of the answer. So, I figured I'd come to the, to the source, so.
Yeah, we have a specific standard in regards to how fire hydrant is put in the ground in regards to the base part of it where it sits on the flange and down to the ground. There is very specific in regards to what it can be. We've had a number of fire hydrants and water surfaces of late that get hit by vehicles that has been creating a lot of problems. So, they may be trying to be set at the proper elevations to minimize that impact. But I can get you that detail associated with that if you've got a card with you or we can touch base with you.
18 inches from the center of the stinger valve to the ground.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the new norm then?
And that's what the code is. It's just that hydrants sunk over the line and ground enough, so it's been like, it's been a notice problem that we've been sending.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'll, I don't have a card with me this evening, but I will get you my information.
Okay.
Yeah, so if that is the new norm, I need to be able to tell the folks that because a lot of these are located right on the edge of the right-of-way in the middle of their yard and they were flushed to the ground, basically the base, and now they're, they're sticking that far out of ground. The base, 18 to 24, not, well, I wouldn't say 24, but at least 18 inches.
Yeah, and I think as I was kind of mentioning, in regards to after it's constructed, a lot of the grounds change in regards to the infrastructure that we built.
Okay, all right.
Let me give you a business card.
Okay, thank you. The floor is still open. There are no more public comment. Bring it back, any further comment from the council? Ralph, thank you very, very much for the presentation. I'm sure we'll be working together with you.
Certainly.
We appreciate your comment. Okay. Yeah, got it. At this time, with council's permission, Jeff, I'm going to change the pres, the order around just a little, okay?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to change, just, okay. At this time, with your permission, I'd like to move to Agenda Item 12, Discuss Take Action on Agreement with the Satellite High School for the track resurfacing in public access. Is that, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to 12, which is the agreement with the school for the refurbish of the track. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. At your April 5th, 2017 meeting, you authorized me to enter into an agreement with the Satellite High School or to negotiate agreement with Satellite High School to assist an upgrade of the track for a cost of $30,000 and to make the track accessible to the public on certain days of the week. The school board has allotted enough funds for the expansion and renovation of the concrete for the track and Satellite High School has been tasked with raising the additional funds necessary to cover the track and the sponge material. The track improvements would have a significant impact on our community and we have been able to agree on allowing resident access to the track on Tuesdays and Thursday evenings between 3:30 PM and sunset and also on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, between sunrise and sunset. Unless, of course, there's, there is a need for school district purposes such as a track meet or something like that. This agreement term is for 20 years and we have also included a willingness to provide 30% of the funding for the maintenance cost of the rubberized track, including, which is the re-spraying of the track which occurs approximately every five to seven years. We've been notified that that cost is about $30,000?
I think you said it doubled, it's about $10,000 a year.
Okay, so I'll let Coach Butler address that one. And, and that the, the school board would be responsible for the remainder of those funds. So, we have negotiated that agreement in your packet and
Okay. Butler, welcome. I have a list of questions I'd like to ask for it and then each council, we can go through it. And I'm for it. I like the city to participate. I mean, I'm a big supporter of the sports programs there, always have. I've just got some questions. The refurb cost, is that $10,000 a year our cost or in five years, the cost to re-spray is $10,000?
No, $10,000 a year is what the Fisher Tracks recommends. We set aside total cost. So, we're looking at $7,000 to $8,000 my cost.
Three ours.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the high end. I had Holy Trinity when I built that one in 2005. I, it was seven years, it was 2012 when I had it resurfaced and it's gone up substantially, but yeah, that's
Okay, so approximately three grand a year is going to be our. School events?
Yeah.
And I'm only asking this
We don't have weekend track meets. I put track meets on on Friday, so you won't, you won't have it Saturday.
Well, great. Other school events? Soccer?
That's a possibility. Tuesday and Thursday night soccer is a possibility. So, we would have to switch nights. We would have a sign-up that would switch to Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, so.
Great, that's just my concern, like JV football and stuff. And then also, your track, school gets out 3:30-ish?
Correct.
Tuesdays, Thursdays, there is no school event. Are we interrupting your practice by people showing up?
In the spring, there will be practice after school until we're about 4:30.
Okay. Then I, that doesn't, that bothers me not from that. I'd like to make it available because what that tells me is springtime. What you have is daylight hours. So, the daylight hours obviously are weaning right now. And in another week, it's going to be daylight savings time and it's dark at 5:30.
But I'll be, I'll be there Tuesday and Thursday nights with lights on Tuesday and Thursday.
What I would like to see added to this is some way of flexibility, we get our time. If you have an event on Tuesday and Thursday and we can't, we go. We're going to work together and make Monday available that week.
Right.
And the other thing I see is the summertime. There, obviously, we don't want to use lights because there's a cost to it and that's not what we're trying to do.
Right.
But in the summertime, do you, on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, do you or does a school member, because I know when you have baseball games, they have to be, school personnel has to be there, football games, there's many.
Right.
On Saturdays, is the track just open?
Yes, we've agreed to let the city open and close the gate. We're putting it in a new turnstile gate. The school board is paying for the new turnstile gate installation and everything. And they've agreed to allow the city to open it at sunrise and lock it at sunset.
Can we in any way during the summer get more time? Here's my theory on track.
I thought that was just a push-up.
Is that, okay, well, here's my theory. You can, a kid can play soccer on any field and now there's a soccer program.
Oh, yeah.
If you want to build a track program, my idea is it's got to be available to people, to the young kids.
Oh, yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all. Open it during the summer when there's no school?
I thought that was kind of implicit in all of our
Well, I did not.
It's not in here.
It's not in the agreement. And Coach, I don't mean to be the pain in the neck.
No, no, no.
I just know we built a swimming pool and, you know, we battle
Right.
Every year, every couple of years, we're told we can't use it. But they use our tennis courts and all this. I just want a great relationship to where we're all one.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
I have no issue. I just want to make sure Jim's comfortable with the agreement because within 10 days, I owe you the money. And I want to make sure that what we think we can use and what the agreement says are all on the same page. And so, you're there, if we hand you the 30 grand today, you're ready for rubberizing.
We are.
Great.
We, the school board has given us, go ahead, so our first, they, Fisher Tracks tells me they'll be done no later than January 15th, so.
Questions from council on this? I'm sorry I had those, I just
Oh, no, no.
I want to make sure, you know
And I'm around all summer too, so I, I think it should be more than open.
I think, Coach, you remember, I was probably, well, I was the only one that was kind of against this whole thing when we, when we talked about this.
We'll get you running yet, that's okay.
Well, there was a reason, I, at the point you were here, I hadn't kind of done my homework and I didn't want to say yes on something and then pull it back. I got to sit down with Mark Elliott shortly after the April thing when you were here and spent some time with him. And he answered all the questions. Not that you didn't, but I wanted to hear it from him as to what it was. But we spent about 20 minutes talking about this whole thing. So, bottom line to council and to you as well is I'm, I'm on board with this. So, I, I think it's going to be a good little project. But I just had to do my homework and get my comfort level to where it needed to be before I was going to say that out loud.
Thanks.
I just, I just have one question I want to ask. We're looking at basically, Courtney, about $3,000 a year in track refurbishment as a shared, our shared portion. I think we all know what's going on in Tallahassee with being preempted on all kinds of things. And while $3,000 isn't a lot of money, at some point in time, if for whatever reasons our budget is put in a precarious place because of what goes on in Tallahassee and we can't come up with $3,000, does that mean we don't get to use this track?
That's up to the school board, it would terminate the agreement though.
Okay.
The other issue is
I mean, I, I don't, I'm hoping that that never comes to fruition, but I'm deeply concerned about what's going on in Tallahassee because I read a recent article yesterday about the guy who's coming in who's going to be Speaker of the House from 2020 to 2022. And we've got six years of this mentality going on in Tallahassee. And I don't know financially where we're going to be as a city. I mean, I'm hoping that we get development on, you know, the 100 acres. I'm hoping that we are financially sound. But these people are looking at legislation that basically says they want us to spend all of our reserves, which is our city savings account, before we can do anything with taxes.
Well, good luck in Indian Atlantic.
It's, it's really
The board is dealing with the same mentality.
Yeah, I know, I talked to Matt Reed today. I understand the dynamics.
I'm not worried about that because I, I promised, Space Coast Runners has given me $5,000. Running Zone's given me $10,000. The people in the community have given money to use this track. So, it's, it's going to be open unless I get hit by a truck.
And the other thing too is, and it's something that both Mark Elliott and I kind of had a complaint about was that we had to negotiate the agreement, not with each other, but with the board. And that made it difficult because we were dealing with their attorney and things like that. And so, if it was just between us and the school, we probably would have had this done, you know, two months ago. But unfortunately, it was done at that level and there was no way to get around that. So, that's why you see things in here that, you know, may not look like it's in either one of our favors, but it's kind of the way they had to, we had to do it just to get it done.
Well, this is, I mean, it's a great partnership.
Jim, just from the legal standpoint, you're comfortable with this agreement and with the things we said today? Are you comfortable?
Yeah, I mean, we went through some interesting changes, including the term and various things like that. But yeah, I mean, I mean, I think this is the best we're going to do. And obviously, we can add in what you just talked about, but it's going to have to go back to the school board for approval.
I just want the ability of you to build a great program. Those young kids who during the summer, what do they do? You know, they got baseball fields, football fields, soccer, lacrosse now.
Yeah.
And, but no one ever, I can tell you, I've lived through my life, there's never been really a track program where kids in junior high school
Right.
Or maybe in junior high, elementary school, learn that. And when you have a real nice facility to do it on, I think kids are more apt to
And kids are wanting to come to Satellite. When you join a rubber track that you don't have at Rock Lake, Innoviera, and Melhi, Arrow Galley.
I mean, I, I get that. I just want to make sure, you know, that we do it right and, you know, it's maintained and it's a nice place.
Yeah, you can't let it go or it'll be like Palm Bay's and Merritt Island's and they're, they've gone to crap because they didn't maintain them, so.
We, we're also having a conversation with the district about the field, the football field and how disappointed we are in that and our games having to be held in other areas. And that started happening with the district did a centralized maintenance and it took maintenance out of control of the schools, right? I mean, that's really when the problem started. So, we, we've kind of sent our letters and things over to the, to the district about that because that's very unfortunate. I just want to say how excited I am.
Yeah, it's going to be nice.
This has been a long, a long project to get done. We'll see it.
And make sure you charge Drew some extra.
And then the gate, the turnstile too is, that, that's about a $5,000
It's a $5,000 gate.
That they're doing to the gate to, you know
People can't take in bicycles and that. There's going to be a donor board that Carlson's has made, it's going to be out on Jackson. City Satellite High above Indian Atlantic down at the bottom. Or Indian Harbor, yeah.
At this time, let me open up for public comments. Coach, if we need your question. At this time, I'll open up for Agenda Item 12, the agreement with the Satellite High School on the track. Public comment is open. Here and none, bring it back to council.
Make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement with the school board of Brevard County for public use of satellite high track in exchange for a payment of $30,000 for the track resurfacing and a future obligation of 30% of the maintenance cost.
Second.
Thank you, Mindy. Okay, um, and Jim, thank you very much.
You wanted, you wanted.
Do you want to add the summertime and alternate days to this or?
If me being your lawyer, I would say put it in there.
I'll amend the motion to include those.
We can do that. I don't, I thought that was implicit anyway, so I don't think they're going to have an issue with it.
Okay, great.
I second that amended motion.
Appreciate it. Okay, any further comment?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Coach, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And make sure Drew plays his fair share. That's all I want to tell you. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, one other one chief before you, I'm sorry. I was just going to sit down over here. That's good, I see that. We're going to do 22, if that's okay with everybody. Moving 22. Excuse me, discuss, take action on results, request for proposal for solar energy for city hall. Courtney.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 21st, 2017, we issued an RFP to solicit proposals from qualified vendors to install a grid-connected photovoltaic system on the roof of city hall, in this, here at city hall. Bids were due on August 1st and we received nine responses. And due to the confusion among vendors regarding bids, submittal requirements, we extended the bid period to August 18th. After that, we had a bid opening and we met, the evaluation committee met on October 3rd to review the proposals and review them based on three categories of price per unit, system, price, panels, inverters, optimizers, components, warranties, payment schedule, monitoring, replacement, and community, and then reliability, conditions, guarantees, mounting structure, hardware, and other. As a result of the discussion, we had five vendors that were shortlisted and we asked them for presentations. On October 5th, we met again to review the presentations by the shortlisted vendors and we created a tabulation of points. Based on the scores, the evaluation committee is recommending to award the RFP to solar energy, of, of solar energy to, for city hall to Brevard Solar. And the price quoted by this vendor for their 92.2 kilowatt system is 168,720 for all USA manufactured products. Or we could also go for a, a system with quality components that are not made solely in America for 159,500. Because we require a bonding requirement from contractors working on all public buildings for anything valued 200,000 or less, it is out of our discretion to require that. However, we are asking for that. And we ask two, the two highest ranked vendors to provide verification of their ability to execute the payment of a performance bond. We have received a verification from the second in line, which is ESA Clean Footprint, but from Brevard Solar, we have not. So because of that, we're asking for you to include in your motion to approve the reward, the reward of request for proposals number 1617-07 Solar Energy for city hall to Brevard Solar and, and authorize the city manager to enter a contract. However, if they do not provide a performance bond within seven days to allow us to move into contract negotiations to the next highest bidder, the next highest bidder, the next person, or next vendor in line, which is ESA Clean Footprint.
Do I have to still move?
I'm going to second.
I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, seconded by Councilman Montanaro. Question from council. I, I sat in on a couple of meetings. Wow, what a bunch, great job, guys. I mean, a lot of information out there. I mean, things changing to me all the time. Question, though, we, we won't have the battery system or anything correct because we have the generator system here. So if I'm using the wrong term, correct me. The, the power goes out or we, from FPL into the building, does the solar still going to work? Is the transfer box going to be the type that isolates it to where the so, the system still works?
I, I can't answer that question right now. I mean, I'm sure we can come back to you with that information, but that, the way we have this set up, I don't know. Not, not yet.
The way that it was discussed at the, because that question, that specific question was asked. And the solar portion will shut down. It will still be energized. The inverters will be energized on the roof. You'll kick into your generator, your backup generator, but you can't run solely off of the solar.
Is that because of the transfer? It's a different transfer box that isolates it when FPL power goes down?
Yeah.
Question. Well, I've been, been doing a little bit of reading on house news and stuff like that. So you've got this big sun shining on these things and if FPL goes down, you can't use it. I mean, forget the generator for a minute. You got solar that's there that you're using it because it's better in a lot of ways. But because of this box, and I know there are boxes that will isolate it.
Well, we can ask those questions when we award the contract and go to the negotiations and that comes back to you from the actual contractor.
I know they cost, the only reason I'm saying is some of my reading on home type things, they cost a little more. I just want to make this as efficient as possible. And if FPL has a little bit of an outage and we don't need to run a generator because our panels that we pay all this money for are perfectly okay, they're working, why can't we use power? So that's my only question on this.
Okay, we can, we can.
I wasn't even aware that that scenario wasn't going to play out. I was under the impression that we were going to be on solar first and we're selling back to FPL. But we're, our solar is the sustainability part of this building. And if the power goes out, we still have the solar. Then that defeats, in my, in my mind, that defeats part of the reason why we're looking to go in a solar. If there's some way of making sure that our solar is still going to be on when the power goes off, we were out for eight days here.
I understand.
It's a tran, it's a, what I've, the reason I've done and maybe that I'm off, but it's the type of transfer box that you put in.
So when, when we, when we award the contract and we want these things addressed, we can ask that contractor to address them and we can have them come and present the system to you. But right now, I don't have that down here because we haven't negotiated that contract. So we can, we can have them come back to you and present how we're going to install it and all of the options that they can use. But, you know, but, I mean, if we're going to have solar most of the time and, you know, if we have to rely on a generator when there's downed power every now and then, I don't think that defeats the purpose of having solar.
But my thing is, is you have solar and you, if it's on. And even during the hurricane, two days after, the sun's blazing, it's shining.
Okay, well, we, we can ask those questions to make sure they come back.
With those, with those, okay, so if we award this contract to who we're awarding it to and then we find out that whatever these other products are, we're not really looking at a total bid here because we don't know who's providing what and how much it's going to cost for this extra product. Well, the problem with the, the, um, theory of going total solar when the, when we lose power, when we lose FPL power is, one, you're only going to be able to run during the day. You're not going to be able to run during the night because the sun's not shining. And then the generator. And if you have, but you're going to double your cost by adding batteries to it. You do it, but, you know, by adding these batteries that you can, that will store the energy and you'd be able to pull off that, those batteries during the day, but that doubles the cost of the system. The, the backup generator is, is there to basically back up the FPL power. I do believe that there's probably a way that you can use the inverters during the daytime. I can't answer that, that answer, I don't have that answer technically. You know, so as, as the city manager said, we could get that answer from them. And we don't award the, the contract contingent on it. I don't, I don't know how to, how to put that.
This is the thing. We're awarding a bid based on, you know, a proposal. And then we enter into contract negotiations with that top person. So the top person that we're recommending is Brevard Solar. So when they come back with a contract, if they can't, we can't negotiate that contract to your satisfaction, we just move on to the next person down the line. So if they can't satisfy these questions for you in the way you want them to, then we can just move down to the next clean footprint. So that's how this design works. So at this point, we're not in a position to be able to answer these questions because we, we haven't gone down to that, we haven't gone to that system design yet.
Yeah, and I suppose not on the batteries.
I'm sorry?
Mine wasn't for the battery end. There's a, I've read on other things and that's generally what I'm saying. Okay, um, question I'll open up, I think the general area has some answers for us part of it, so.
I did just want to say one thing with the, the benefit that we'll have is the fact that the power will cost us less while our power is on, regardless of whether or not we don't have power from it when it's turned off. So I think, you know, you're going to have less expensive power bills even with the cost of, wow. Obviously, when the power's out, we have to address that issue, but that's kind of where I'm coming from on.
Yeah, and I understand that, you know, from that end. But if it costs 5,000 more for a different switch that isolates it from the FPL. And I know why FPL does it, so people don't get knocked off the power poles, okay? So that's the only reason I'm saying is we looked at.
Because we're, because we're just awarding a, an RFP. You know, they aren't here to answer these questions, so, you know, we don't, we don't know these answers.
Right, I understand. Um, at this time, open up for public comment on agenda item 22, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, Larry Maxwell, Space Coast Architects. You know, of course, here on another issue tonight, but this is one of the things I've been focusing on quite a while. What's been, what you have brought up a very important question is this is one of the kind of dirty, dark secrets that are being held back about solar. What has happened is the IOUs, investor-owned utilities like FPL, what have you, had managed to pass, get some legislation passed in the state that would prevent people who have solar on their houses to be able to use their solar during a power outage. Uh, it's, it, quite frankly, an obvious way just to, to prevent people from wanting to get solar because if I can't use it when I need it, then why would I buy it in the first place? The, the issue of, of it backfeeding to the grid and causing problems to servicemen is, is actually a red herring. And we've been trying to fight this and trying to get legislation changed at the state level. Because what happens is, for example, if you have the generator you have here, you have a generator, a built-in generator at your house, okay, that automatically kicks on when you lose power from FPL. Those systems are allowed to come on with an automatic transfer switch that will take them off-grid so they don't backfeed the grid in the process. But they passed legislation that doesn't allow you to do that with solar systems. Now, what some people have done is actually gone in and, and after they got their system approved and set up, they've gone in and actually put in a manual transfer switch. So if their system goes down because the utility company goes down, their, their system sees that, shuts it down, they go in, they throw the manual transfer, okay, and then bring their system back up to run their house. And then when they get some indication that the grid is back up, they go ahead and shut their system down, throw the switch back over and then bring it back up and then get the benefits both sides of that. So that's, the, the question that you want to ask these guys, okay, is explain this because what happens is, is we're finding that the solar installers don't mention this, okay, because of the fact they realize that if they mention this, then they're going to lose half of the business of installing solar systems. So the question is very well put. What happens if, is there any workarounds to allow this to occur? Because otherwise, when we want this the most or we need it the most, and we've seen after, after Ermun, what have you, when it really is critical and we can't use it, that means if you were three or four days without power, you would have to feed your generator because you would not be able to use this other system at all. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
Floor is still open for public comment? Here and none back to council, further council comments?
I, I know these systems are out there because my sister has one on her house and they are totally off the grid and it just automatically switches over. If we're able to get something like this, we could use the generator at night if we need the generator at night. But while the sun is out, if we're able to be able to use it, that's what we're paying for is to get this, you know, scenario. So I would look at, you know, asking the questions and coming up with whatever we need to come up to find out what that thing costs.
Thank you. Any further?
I just have just one quick question and I'm, I'm just, just because I'm new at this. So, um, when we're talking about, so we'll negotiate whether or not we use the USA-made products at the next level. At what point do we make a decision between the two prices on that? We're just kind of.
We're going to bring that back to you with, with the system design and specifics and so on, with the contract.
So has, has the ESA Clean Footprint, they already have provided us with what we're looking for?
Okay.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion, counsel staff, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to agenda item seven, presentation by the police chief. Jeff?
Thank you, sir, Mayor, city manager and council. The city manager asked me to give a presentation on the opioid and fentanyl issues. I'm pretty sure everyone has been seeing, reading and hearing about all of the issues. Satellite Beach is not completely immune to it, although obviously our impact is much less than in, you know, larger areas and bigger cities, but it's, it's still, it's still here. Commander Hodge, who has been with us for 30 years, is all our support services commander and he's in charge of the criminal investigations division. When we spoke about what the city manager wanted and he started to talk about all of the information that he has, the research he's done, because he runs the CID division and that's what they do is, you know, drug investigations among other things, I realized instantly that he knew way more about it than I did right to start with. So I said, why don't, why don't you do the presentation and I'll just, you know, kind of introduce you. So he, he put together a PowerPoint here and I'm going to have him go through the presentation. We're going to work through it relatively quickly because the PowerPoint's out there, plus it's up there. And that way, we know there'll be some questions. So as we go through, if you have any questions, we'll certainly answer them then. But at this point, Commander Hodge, you want to go ahead?
Hello, good evening. I don't know when she brings me in, it seems to really go sideways. We simplified this down a little bit because, number one, I could do an eight-hour course on this and that's not what, what you want or what anybody wants. But what I want to do is kind of take you through a little bit of, of what's going on with fentanyl, a little bit about what it is, just understanding what the drug is itself, how it's impacting Florida and our area, which is the most important thing to us here. And then a little bit what we're doing as an agency to protect our officers and also conduct criminal investigations and kind of weed some of this out as best we can. So I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. I'm trying not to bore you with statistics, but you can see that we have significant increase in fentanyl deaths over the last several years. The narcotic killed more than 700 people between January and June of 2016. In 2015, I believe it was about 901 fatalities due to fentanyl. So obviously, that's on track to exceed that and I'm sure it did. They're still gathering numbers from 2016, so we don't have the finals on that yet. But you can see that just this summer, Palm Beach County, Broward County, I mean, we're talking, they went from two a day to four a day to five or six a day. And then just recently in July, they had 10 fatalities from fentanyl in a 24-hour period. Just really quickly, the drugs that caused the most deaths in 2016 were fentanyl, heroin and cocaine. Really, heroin and cocaine are still very, very prevalent. But unfortunately, the deaths, the overdose deaths are increasing because we're seeing more and more fentanyl and other synthetic materials being mixed in with that that when used even in such a fraction of, of the dose, will easily kill one, two, three adults from what people are used to taking as one single dose. So just really quickly, we talked about common opiates, which we know is from the seed pods, from, from poppy plants and those are things like heroin, morphine and codeine. seed pods, from poppy plants, and those are things like heroin, morphine and codeine. The opioids are the oxycodone, the fentanyl, of course, the U47700, which is another synthetic. That number was given to it by the pharmaceutical manufacturing company at the time in the late 70s, so it just stuck with it. And then this gray death that we'll talk about here in a minute, which is actually a combination of all of these things mixed into one chunk. We believe on a search warrant recently, we may have actually picked up a little dime-sized piece of this, and we'll see what becomes of that. Really quickly, just a bit of history, in 2007 is when it first started showing up, but it kind of shut down in about 2014. If you see, or I'm sorry, it slowed down but then picked back up in 2014. And if you coincide that with what we all know as pill mills, we know that around 2010, the pill mills exploded, we started getting real serious about shutting those down, regulating those, the prescription drug database came into effect, so a lot of things changed there. And so in 2014, as we started to clamp down on the drug database or the prescription pill mills, now we see the heroin comeback, and then some of these synthetics that are coming out. A lot of stuff is coming from Mexico and China. Really quickly, this was developed as a pain reliever. It's used today sometimes in cancer patients, we have seen it here in the city. You can see that it's 50 times stronger than the morphine or more than that. And then there's a second derivative of fentanyl, which is carfentanil, and this stuff is almost as nasty as it gets, minus that gray death we mentioned a minute ago. This is an elephant tranquilizer. It's for large animals, it's a tranquilizer used for just that, it's got no medical purposes. And when you talk about the dose levels, and I don't know if Chief wants to maybe walk these around, just make sure, get them back from Mr. Beetle. You'll see firsthand what the differences are between this, the chief is bringing around is actually a lethal dose of each of the drugs. The first and one that has the most quantity is heroin, and then you'll see the fentanyl, and then you'll see the carfentanil. And if you consider that there's a few grains of that carfentanil, or even the fentanyl itself, and they're cutting that into heroin or cocaine, you know, if your drug dealer sneezes, you're going to kill 50 people. And like the first slide said before we started, you just don't, you just don't know what your drug dealer is putting as a cutting agent into your drugs. And that's why you're seeing some of the overdoses and things like that. The other issue with carfentanil that we're learning is that it also doesn't mix well with alcohol. And so the Narcan that is commonly used in the fields now that everyone's heard of isn't reacting well when a drunk person takes an overdose of heroin or cocaine mixed with fentanyl or carfentanil because it has very limited reaction on that. So there's some concerns there, too. We mentioned just briefly about the gray death, and as I said, it's a combination of all those things on that first page that I showed you. Just moving to Brevard County, we've seen it here in cocoa, large amounts of carfentanil have been seized in cocoa. We've seen fentanyl spray, sprayed onto baby formula, which is being distributed as either cocaine, heroin or fentanyl powder, which it's not, it has the fentanyl spray on it. We've seen that here in Palm Bay. And as far as the earlier comment I made, you can see that the drug reports from the beginning of this year, according to the DEA, the primary exhibits of seized drugs have two primary agents, and that's obviously heroin and fentanyl. I mean, those are the two things that people are shooting up, and so those are the two things, the heroin, you think you buy your heroin, and it ends up from what the DEA is seizing to have fentanyl in it. So if we break it down a little bit to the Brevard County Medical Examiner's Report, you can see that cocaine is still one of the main causes. Fentanyl is clearly creeping up, and heroin is still low right now, but we're seeing an increase in that. But it appears that from a Brevard County standpoint, we're seeing more of a fentanyl cocaine-laced cocktail than we are the heroin just yet. Okay, so to narrow it down even a little more for Satellite Beach, these are cases that I was personally involved in. So we had one fentanyl defatality, which was doctor-prescribed fentanyl. The doctor-prescribed fentanyl generally comes in patches, it can be in a nose spray, it can be in pill form. In one of the cases that we worked, we had our victim with five fentanyl patches attached to them when it should only be a single dose. Some of the things that drug dealers are taking is, and you've seen the commercials for some of these medications that attach to your arm, and they contain liquid meds a lot of times for post-chemo use, for pain relief and things like that. Well, originally, fentanyl used to come in one of these sort of reservoirs that would attach to patients that were in need of the medication, but druggies were figuring out really quickly that if I stick a needle in there, I can extract it and I have pure fentanyl in a needle. So they've actually switched those patches to a mesh. Interestingly enough, it's, and it's pretty common knowledge, so I don't mind saying this, but if you microwave a mesh fentanyl patch, you can get trace amounts of liquid fentanyl out of it to mix with other drugs. And that's also now what we're seeing, too, and so now they're working on some legislation to make it even more difficult to not prescribe the patches, but also how they're manufactured and to eliminate anybody being able to extract anything from them.
I just wanted to toss in there, he reminded me, we're talking about absorption here a little bit. The sheriff's office is working a case very similar to what he said, where a gentleman had five patches on, we're supposed to have one, and he had them all on his chest, and took his seven-month-old baby to sleep, and went to sleep with the baby, and the baby woke up, the baby did not wake up, he woke up, the baby was dead, and they're trying to figure out the cause of death, but the strong suspicion is the absorption just through the patches through clothing. I mean, that's just how, that's just how significant this stuff, and this is medical fentanyl. It's just nasty stuff, but.
You can see in some of the numbers that I put together for you that the one in 14 and one in 15, both were doctor-prescribed fentanyl, just being overused. Opioids are nothing new to us because we're dealing with the oxycodone, oxycodone, all those things. So we did have a fatality in 16, which was opioids overdose suicide. We had two this year, we're taking a closer look at, I put suspected heroin/fentanyl because some of the indicators at the scene that we were working give us that feeling, but of course, these things have to go over FDLE, and sometimes they can take up to six months before they return. Our lab work on that, so we're waiting on that. And the other one, we're waiting on toxicology reports, and unfortunately, the ME kind of works at their own pace based on their workload, and it could take up to five months before we hear anything back on that other one. So again, from my standpoint, this isn't overwhelming because we're seeing an overdose here, doctor-prescribed, that sort of thing. I included our drug arrests excluding marijuana because, while it does show an increase in drug arrests, sometimes that can be directly related to the activity our officers are called to. You know, we spent hours on search warrant yesterday, and we'll end up with multiple arrests that may or may not boost those numbers. So I would like to see over the next few years how this may change if fentanyl, you know, becomes one of the more common ones that we come in contact with. But for right now, I don't see any major increase in that particular thing. So from our standpoint, from a risk management standpoint, and just like Chief Hughes will say, is we have to look out for our folks and for cops, that's sometimes a hard thing to do, because a lot of times, they're jumping out of their cars and just running off, and we'd like to slow them down a little bit, and it's hard to do. You know, the fire department always jokes around that when you go to a scene where a tanker's overturned, the firemen look through their binoculars to see how many cops are laying around, and they know not to go up there without their breathing apparatus on. And it's sometimes, unfortunately, a true statement, they just kind of rush into things. But I put some examples in here for you about some of the real-world cases that are out there, and there's not a lot, but there are some out there which describe one drug seizure where an officer, and you see by the amounts that I sent out, that even trace amounts can be fatal. One such seizure where an officer had some on his gloves and takes his gloves off and just rubs something on his hands and ends up in the hospital. With this next slide, the same type thing, is you're looking at a SWAT team that deployed a flashbang, which hit some powder and sent it into the air, and it was airborne, and then they ended up inhaling it, same type thing, you have an ER full of SWAT members. And the other one as well, where they knocked a table over. So these are the kind of things that, you know, we're always cautious of, but now when you start to think about, you know, just a few grains of this stuff in the air is going to cause me an issue. Yesterday, as I mentioned, we served a search warrant for five hours, you know, I'm in a mask and gloves, and we even thought about backing out and going into full-body suits for a while because you just don't know from one baggie to the next what you're going to get your hands into. But ingestion, inhalation and absorption is what we teach our officers, they have to be aware of these things. As we've said, even residual amounts of fentanyl can create issues for them. One of the things that accreditation has done for us many, many years ago is put us in a position to issue our officers PPE kits, personal protection equipment, and so they all carry gloves and masks and goggles and all those things. What we did learn from some of this research is we certainly need to upgrade some of that equipment. You know, some of the old surgical masks really aren't what they're recommending now, so we went to these, heavier-type latex glove, that sort of thing. I put in here redundantly that really pounding this into their heads and letting them slow down, especially on hot calls, and especially our uniform division that's running in, we train them that if it's a known drug house or that we've had any issues before, they have to slow down, they have to glove up, they have to get their masks on. For me and our investigators, it's a little easier because we go after the fact, even though we're spending a lot more time with people that have overdosed, particularly in death investigations, we stop, we glove up outside, we put our downs on because we know we're more than likely going to be around something that could be harmful to us, even if it's not as serious as the fentanyl. Just at the bottom of that, we talked about on the contact point, if they get into something, they know what it is, they know to contact me, and if not, then a non-call investigator. And then the other thing we've done is we've put in some precautions for evidence handling folks, Patty Novak at the station, by double bagging things, they're marked fentanyl, just like we would mark things with bloodborne pathogens and those type things as biohazard. So some of the other impact changes, real quickly, state law is now that if we can prove, or the state can prove, that someone was, died from a fentanyl overdose, and we can trace that drug back to the dealer, then we can charge the dealer with a murder charge, provided that the person did die, that it was identified as fentanyl, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. As far as an impact and change from my standpoint, this creates a staffing issue when we're working these cases, we're actively working one right now, because when you're talking about dealing with drug dealers, you're going to be looking at subpoenas for cell phone records, search warrants for cell phones. I looked at a drug dealer's phone two weeks ago, and this guy was dealing with no more than 65 people. But there's obviously an expectation on our part to seek some justice for the person that overdosed and their family and loved ones, so we take that as far as we possibly can, but for a city like Satellite Beach, we're limited on, you know, how far we can take those things before we have to turn it over to the state and kind of move on. So that does create a little bit of a challenge for us. Again, I mentioned before, this is nothing new for us as far as precautionary measures, but really, since the pill mills, we've trained our officers to be on the lookout for things other than just a joint in a car and the obvious stuff. When the oxycodone, oxycodone and all those things really exploded, there were counterfeit pills, there were different hiding spots, concealment areas within vehicles, all these things that we trained them at that point because that's where really this exploded. And so we just have to kind of modify their thinking a little bit, but fentanyl comes in all shapes and sizes, it can be a counterfeit Tylenol pill, it can be just about anything they come across, but they're used to looking those things from when the pill mill epidemic hit. So really, as far as that goes, it's nothing new. We train them to rely on sound interview skills, they separate people in cars, they talk to them about whose prescription is this. And you remember, if I have somebody on a scene and they have a prescription bottle that says Brad Hodge on it, and the pills are in it as described on that label, I'm perfectly legal. I may be selling these, or they may be counterfeit fentanyl, so now we have to make sure our officers have sound interview skills, they're able to kind of sniff out these people that may be a little nervous, something's not right here, maybe call an investigator and that type thing. And then from an enforcement standpoint, we focus on our known offenders, which we have been doing. We've made several arrests involving pills and pill sales, but only one suspected case of fentanyl right now, and again, we're waiting on the lab for that one as well. So kind of the same as the pill mills, not major changes there. I already mentioned financial impact, I don't know, we'll see how busy the investigators are on some of these follow-up charges. We do see some additional time and resources for training because ordinarily, maybe we'd spend 10 hours on the range. I have presentations at our training meetings in November to give these guys about an hour to two hours, another update, make sure everybody's, you know, equipped, they have to hear it again and again and again. Not major, but it does take away a little bit from our training time, or we add it somewhere else. And then the other thing is, kind of minimal cost with the $500 to $1,000 annual increase for the upgraded equipment, that sort of thing, keeping a stock, you know, these are one and done, they're in the trash when you're done, that type of thing.
The, you know, we talked about the financial impact, and, you know, we didn't get into, you know, staffing impact, obviously, because that's, you know, that's something that we'll look at, but it's just becoming increasingly more difficult. You have two investigators, and like you said, you know, you're doing search warrants and you're trying to investigate while things are still coming in, and we have two investigators, and they're averaging, you know, 30 to 40 cases per person per month. It gets pretty difficult to then chase down a suspected drug dealer who sold to someone who overdosed it in the city, which is what he was talking about. But so, but, you know, we didn't get deep into that impact, but certainly that will be something that needs to be looked at. And as far as the cost right now, we can absorb that in our current budget right now, we've already purchased the stuff we need to do. So it's, I didn't want you to see this and think we were here asking for, you know, $500 to $1,000 extra. The budget's set, we're good, we can, you know, we can put it in there. Sometimes you want to add it, that'd be, no, I'm kidding. So based on that, if anybody has any questions.
Chief? Everybody? Thank you very much. Questions from council?
Just one quick question. I know we want to rush, be done, but you talk about the deaths from the overdose of fentanyl. How many overdoses are we seeing where there aren't deaths involved, and in which case that we're having to use the?
Narcan.
The Narcan, are we seeing a lot of those? I know, is that a Don question, or is that?
We had, in 2014 and 2015, we had no overdose deaths. I believe we averaged about 10 calls a year for what the fire department labels as drug poisoning. So it's, it didn't specifically state fentanyl, and to my knowledge, we haven't used the Narcan, chief?
Sorry, chief. Oh, chief. Chief.
No, and that's actually a good observation because they're, you know, of the number of deaths, but that doesn't necessarily represent the number of overdoses. So as Brad puts it, so when we have an incident that we suspect to be an overdose, that's what's just listed as suspected overdose. The interesting piece of this is the use of the drug Narcan, that is, our use of Narcan has increased. But I will say that when we talk about the overdose problem, we can't carry enough Narcan to overcome that issue. And so, you know, so basically for us is that we will administer Narcan, but it's for us as an EMS standpoint, it's the management of the symptoms, and so if there's a respiratory issue, we treat that and deal with it from that standpoint. But I will say that our use of Narcan has increased.
That's kind of what I wanted to have represented.
Yes, yes. We, specific numbers on how many overdoses that did not result in death, we don't, I don't have, but yes, they're out there and it is increasing. And he's absolutely right, there's, we talked to police officers that carry Narcan, and, you know, they'll administer five and six doses to somebody, and they're $35 to $40 apiece.
Yeah.
You know, the fire department, I believe, carries three, and, you know, you do what you can, you know, but yes, it is increasing.
Yeah, this is kind of the sociology question. All this stuff has a life cycle where it's really a hot thing that's going on, like the fentanyl. Do you see, where do you see we're at? Is this going to, is this problem going to continue to escalate? Are we at that peak? I mean, you see all the FBI data and all that stuff, where are we at with, is it going to get, start getting better or getting worse, or where are we at sociologically?
Unfortunately, we're, I wouldn't say we're at the beginning, but we're not anywhere near as bad as it's going to get. And that's just because of the fact that synthetic stuff just keeps getting better, and, not technology, but chemistry just gets better. I mean, you looked at this, you know, that's, you can't even see it, and that's enough to kill you. And it wasn't too long ago that you could do that, and you might not die. And you just, so they're starting, you know, when you're spraying, you know, baby formula with it and selling it. So in my personal opinion, from all the education, training and research that I've done and that we've talked about, no, we're definitely not at the worst. I think it's going to get worse. I think it's going to get worse and it's going to get different. So it's kind of hard to describe, you know, it's going to be different and worse, but...
Counselor Breimer? The other thing is, is the issue is really, these aren't, you know, street junkies. These are people that are getting hooked on medication that are prescribed by doctors and it's still being allowed to continue. They talked about, you know, Rick Scott talked about upping the ante a little bit on the prescription database, which we have access to. They were speaking even yesterday about limiting the opioid prescriptions to a three-day maximum and making the patients have to go back with the doctors are fighting because they feel it puts burdens on the patients. But, you know, these, a lot of these cases are, you know, whether they're younger patients that are going into mom or dad or grandma or grandpa's medicine cabinet and getting started that way and very quickly becoming addicted, and then when they can't get their hands on it, they're buying the heroin and the cocaine off the street and that's laced with fentanyl and that type of thing. So, you know, there, to answer your question from my standpoint, there is no easy answer because until that mentality changes from the medical standpoint about what we're going to prescribe and how we're going to prescribe it and how that's controlled, we're going to continue to make addicts that are going to continue to look for this type of thing. And the pill mills were the hot topic, you know, seven years ago. Fentanyl is now, you know, five years from now when I'm retired, it's going to be something else.
And if you look at history, look at the, you know, look at the curve, right? In the 60s and 70s, it was marijuana was, you know, it started, it was little and then it was really high and then it dropped off. And then we had crack cocaine in the 80s. And then crack cocaine was the new thing and it came in and then it was, it was, I mean, the crack epidemic in the 80s was unbelievable, nothing we'd ever seen. And then, so we're at the beginning of the next curve, upswing, and then, you know, that's what history tells us.
Very good. At this time, let me open up for public comment on presentation. Here or none. Back to council. Any further?
No, thanks, guys.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We've been going for now, 20 seconds, but take a five minute break, please. Please. We reset for the rest. Of course. Here's the only line where you're joining here. Reconvene our, the meeting. At this time, I'm going to switch, we're going to go to do nine, eight, and then 13. Sorry for the switching around, but that way the officers don't have to say. Go on to nine, discuss take action on the purchase of active shooting tactical body armor kits for police departments.
Yes, sir, thank you. The purpose of this expenditure is to purchase these active shooter tactical kits. These, you know, I don't have to get into what is being used out there and what active shooters are using. We have been training since Columbine for active shooters. I could honestly say that as best I can possibly tell, we have everything and as prepared as we can possibly be for the varying situations that we've seen and maybe some that we haven't seen with training and everything. The one thing that we were lacking was something that would stop a high-powered rifle. And it's just that simple. Because of the stuff that's being used out there, a bulletproof vest will stop a handgun and stuff, you know, that's no problem, but it's not going to stop a high-powered rifle and AK-47, you know, those kind of things. And this will. And for the price, it's coming from law enforcement trust funds, which is exactly what this is designed for. And the best part about this, well, the best part is the safety issue, but the second best part would be the fact that this is a one-size-fits-all. So we purchase these for our police officers, they keep them in the vehicles, they have a situation where it's an active shooter or somebody has a high-powered rifle doing whatever, they grab them, they pull them on, and they go. And, you know, that officer retires in a year or two or quits or moves or whatever, we just wash the carrier and give it to the next person because it's one-size-fits-all. So they're, you know, the steel plates aren't going to go bad and other than maybe the carriers, but they're not going to get worn, God hope hardly ever, if ever. So, you know, it's not like they're going to wear out. So it's really just going to cover us for many, many, many years and that's the last piece, I believe, that to make our officers as safe and as prepared as possible. So I'd like to request that you approve the purchase of these vests for a total cost of $8,605.52 to be used from the law enforcement trust fund in accordance with state statute. And I also would like to just mention that you, I'm not sure, you might have a typo there, the statute number is 932-7055, parentheses five, and that's it, there's not an A, it's just a typo. So that being said, that's my, that's my request, sir.
Thank you very, very much. Questions from council?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of 22 active shooter tactical body armor to come from the law enforcement trust fund, the amount of $8,605.52.
Second.
And a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Gibson. Further discussion from?
Chief, you know, I remember years ago, well, actually, years ago, because you were on TV after it happened and Brad was there dealing with the gun, the A1A that headed up the condo and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So my question's kind of a little bit bigger than this. Have you got enough of everything else that you need for this kind of stuff? I mean, I, like, I remember the guy's comment to, I think to you, he made the comment to you when you questioned him, if I could have gotten your bullets, I would have, I didn't think I could.
Yeah. The dog saved us.
Yeah. I remember. That was pretty shocking, listening to that story. And then you gave it on TV, too. So I guess my question is, are we, you talk about a high-powered rifle and all that sort of thing, but I mean, you've got something like a, you can't plan for everything, but like a Las Vegas thing. I mean, what do you, is there anything else you guys need other than what we're giving you? I don't want you going into a gunfight with something and say, gosh, this isn't going to do it, type of thing.
Sir, the best I can possibly tell, we are as prepared as we can reasonably be. I mean, we can talk about armored vehicles and all kinds of crazy stuff, but honestly, we're, I believe we're as prepared as we can possibly be and still be realistic and, yes, we have rifles, we have, we train, we train for active shooters, we train for school incidents, I mean, we train for all of those things. So to answer your question, the best that I can tell, yes, we have, within reason, everything we need.
Okay, I got a follow-up. Okay. So you got everything you need, but if something, if something happens in another community around us, I don't know what they have, but my concern is, is well, let's wait until Satellite Beach gets here and then we'll send in, and they've got all the toys. And I don't want to, how well are we protected around us that can, are we, I can see us being hopefully better than everybody else, but I don't want us to go, let's wait until Satellite Beach gets here and then we'll send Satellite Beach in, that kind of thing.
Well, we, without, you know, checking everybody's inventory, but based on all the stuff that I know, we are more prepared than the majority of the agencies, basically for this kind of stuff and for the training that we do. I know what other officers or other agencies do and, you know, without getting into who does what. I mean, obviously, large agencies, sheriff's office, you know, and those places, they do all of that and then some. So if there's an agency that's anywhere around here, that's anywhere near our size or even bigger, that's more prepared than we are, I'd like to see what that is.
Okay. And just one last question. Something goes down, you guys are there first, but how do you guys go about, just communication wise, holding back the fire department? Who doesn't have any of this stuff? How does that?
Yeah, the fire department is obviously called immediately, but they stage in an area that's a safe distance away and they're prepared. We've also trained with the fire department.
Okay.
To where if we have a situation where we need to get a paramedic or an EMT to an injured person, then there are people on their staff that have trained with us, we can outfit them with what they need and we can get them to the injured person. Depending on the circumstances, yes, that we have trained together, they have done that. The fire chief has, has from the beginning completely bought into the fact that under certain circumstances, there may be a time where we need to get an EMT into a dangerous area and they have trained with us to do that should that need arise.
Okay. That's all that, thanks, man. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Questions from council? Here and this time, open up for public comment on agenda item nine. Okay, bring it back to council. Any further?
No.
Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson? Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Gibson?
Sorry about that, guys.
Moving on to agenda item eight, discuss take action on piggybacking off the Osceola County agreement for the purchase of video surveillance, video surveillance cameras at High Tower Beach Park.
Yes, sir, thank you. As you will see in your package, I'm requesting that we authorize the city manager to execute a contract and piggyback off of the Osceola County agreement with Miller Electric Company to provide security cameras at High Tower Park. These, these security cameras are going to cover the beach access, the parking lot, entrance, exit, the exterior of the restroom buildings, and two of the main pavilions. This, this system is extremely successful. I've seen many examples. This company is all over the country, they have an office in Norbourn. They, they have a lot of customers that have cameras there on the beach. And I've seen the surveillance photos, they go to low light naturally as the sun sets and the light reduces, they go to low light. And for probably 80% of the field of vision with these cameras are going to be facial recognition to where we can snapshot, put it on the news or wherever to say, can we identify this person? And, you know, I don't have to tell you about the incident, you know, the High Tower incident with the sexual battery. I just think that the beach accesses are places where it just seems people go and, you know, and it's dark and there's not a lot of people and, you know, there's only, you know, there's ocean on one side, so you can see people coming. And I just think that this, this is a good idea for our area. Not, not only all of the things that we've seen in the past, but any potential things. I could, I could go on and on and on about all the reasons, but I will just give you one, that we had a situation where a person was thought to go to the beach at High Tower Beach to commit suicide. And this was back when we first had the cameras and the pilot program and the cameras were working for the short time that they were working. And we were actually able to verify because of the cameras that that person did go in and did go into the ocean. And it was huge. If not, we're talking about a huge, time-consuming search and the cameras immediately detected that and the person ended up being found up, upwards. But I just, I recommend that we, we make this purchase, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Chief, discussion?
I just want to ask a question.
Okay, hold on. Discussion from council? Okay, gentlemen.
The salt spray that we generally have on the beach, are these something that are going to need to be periodically cleaned? I mean, how do we, how do we keep them so that they're 100% accurate as far as visibility goes based on the salt spray?
They do need to be cleaned. We are looking at, we have, in the process of looking at a maintenance contract where the company does it, but the cleaning agent that needs to be is just spraying some water on them. And not only that, but they have, because they can be remotely viewed by the company and by us, they'll be live streamed back to the police department so they can be viewed in real time. And an officer can be on a laptop and be out in the field and actually go in and see them real time. So we can tell if it looks like they're starting to get to the point where they need to be cleaned. So we shouldn't have a situation where we have that problem, but we're trying to get a maintenance plan to get that covered for us.
Any further questions? Mark?
I'm going to show my ignorance on this, but I'll just use this term, what about the night vision aspect of it?
Yes, sir, that's what I was talking about as far as the low light, it's, you hate to use night vision because you start to get that, you know, like it's a flare from the helicopter or something, but it's, it's, it's as good a camera as you can get for a reasonable amount of money that will do, that will give us a really good picture in low light. Is it going to be perfect? Is it going to be like daytime? No, but it's, it's, the next jump up is significantly more expensive. And what we're getting and for what this does, this, I think this is extremely reasonable and very much in line with, with all the other agencies that have done things like this.
I mean, there's two schools of thought on this. Do you put up signs that says this, this area is being under surveillance or are you just going to let it go and just see what happens?
Well, I don't think you have to put up signs because it's going to be painfully obvious. I mean, we're not trying to hide anything. It's going to be a big camera and it's going to be all over and you're going to see them. So if you, you know, if you miss that, that, you know, I think that's on you. I mean, that's my opinion. I mean, I certainly am not opposed to putting a big sign up if you want to do it, but, you know.
I just wondered.
That's a good question.
Great. Any further counsel before I open up for public comment? This time, open up for public comment on agenda item eight. Here or none, back to council, without motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract and to piggyback off the Osceola County agreement with the Miller Electric Company for the purchase of a video surveillance equipment and installation at High Tower Park, High Tower Beach Park. I'll second.
That was second by, motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Further discussion? Here or none? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Brett, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to do 13 and open up a public hearing on agenda item 13, ordinance number 1144. Jim?
Ordinance number 1144, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending chapter 30 land development regulations, Satellite Beach City Code by adding definition of boutique hotel and hotel to section 30-107 definitions, Satellite Beach City Code, by adding boutique hotel with restrictions to list of permitted uses in section 30-416, C Commercial District, Satellite Beach City Code, by amending section 30-424 sub B sub 5, Satellite Beach City Code, by reducing minimum size of parking spaces in C Commercial District, by amending the parking table in section 30-424 sub C sub 3, Satellite Beach City Code, to include parking requirements for boutique hotels and eating establishments included in boutique hotels, providing for severability, providing for repealed inconsistent provisions, and providing for an effective date. It's a second reading, ordinance number 1144.
Thank you.
Motion to through ordinance number 1144 on second reading.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, excuse me, Councilman Breimer, I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Gibson. Discussion from council? Here or none? Open up for public comment on agenda item 13. This is a second reading. Here or none, back to council. Lenore?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Passes. Thank you. Moving on to, I believe I have it right here, agenda item 10. Close, excuse me, close the public hearing there. Move on to item 10, discuss take action on resolution 989.
Resolution number 989, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, establishing fire prevention, inspection, and permit fees, repealing resolution number 788, and providing an effective date. It's a reading, resolution number 989.
Thank you. Comments from council?
Can I make a motion?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 989.
A motion by Councilwoman Gibson, second by Councilman Breimer. Chief, anything you'd like to add to it?
No, this is just an offshoot of our conversation we had about bonfires on our beach fire permits. This is the process for raising that fee from $15 to $25, and that's the part that needs to be addressed here. Just as a side note, under the authority having jurisdiction, the other items such as raising the age from 18 to 21 and a few other aspects have already been put in. All the street accesses, we've shrunk them from two sites to one site and transferred those sites to High Tower and Pelican Beach. So we'll concentrate more of the beach fires in that location, give us a better way of monitoring it.
Great, thank you very much. Any further comment from council? At this time, open up for public comment on agenda item 10. Here or none, back to council. Here are none. Back to council. Any further? Lenore?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item eleven, discuss take action on an emergency repair of storm drain pipe under the driveway located at two ninety-five Allen Street. Allen?
Good evening. I guess the simplest way to approach this is if you look to the pictures in your packet of the pipe on, under the driveway at two ninety-five Allen, it speaks volumes. And unfortunately, this was after Irma, that pipe started swallowing their driveway and under their driveway. So once we opened it up, that's what we saw. And then when we went to make the repair, we discovered the picture that is there on the left. The structure that we thought was there was, actually not a structure, it was a pipe with a hole cut in the top of it, with a inlet top on top of it. So in order to make the proper repair and to get these people's driveway back to them in usable manner, we had to make a quick decision. And I approached the city manager on that, and she basically gave me the go-ahead. So we wanted to make sure that you were aware of the situation. The cost of that was seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars to have Lucetti, who was in town already, they were working on a repair that Melbourne Water had a main break on Ocean Spray. And so one of our storm drain lines was damaged there. They were working on one of our storm drain lines, and I asked them to give us a cost for repairing this certain issue. And because of the unorthodox manner in which they had to put the structure back in or put a structure in, they had to make a change to what we originally thought we were going to be able to do with the grate and the inlet top to allow the water to flow. So they had to build a special top for that, and that was an additional eleven hundred and fifty dollars. So.
So we're just asking up to twenty thousand just to make sure that we can capture all the costs. But it is retroactive. We, you know, we apologize for that, but we felt that it would be worse for her to wait to come to you. So we wanted to get it done.
Perfect. Thank you very much. The motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager.
I have.
The motion that's in here doesn't have to, and it comes out of the stormwater utility.
I'll defer to, I'll defer them.
I was going to add that in.
I'll pull mine back. Second.
Up to twenty thousand dollars to come from the stormwater utility.
Double a second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Any further discussion? Here are none. Open up for public comment on agenda item eleven. Here are none back to council. I hope this isn't, but I know, far right. This is the future. Unfortunately.
Well, just, we just completed a repair of a, the same exact situation down at Carissa and Temple. Same situation. It was under the sidewalk. We had to remove thirty feet of sidewalk, make the same type temporary repair. So we know that this aluminum pipe is the rivets that hold the pipe. The pipe is actually not in bad shape, but the rivets that hold it together are just failing. So if you, if you have just a little part of it fail and the dirt gets washed away, now you have all the, what holds it together, the dirt that holds it together, now is gone and it just pops like, you know. So it's not a good situation.
Question. I know you guys are looking at this all the time. It's on the board and there and so forth. Is, are we getting near, I'm not going to, I hate, I don't want more meetings or anything. Workshop, I mean, to figure this.
Yeah, we'll probably, workshop would probably be a good idea when we get a strategy and a plan down. So we have David King with our engineering department, our engineering firm, working with us to come up with some strategies on that. So we'll come back to you and with the.
I just see it as a compounding thing, as the areas are, that are older and those pipe beams and so forth. We just got to get, I think, a handle on it. That way, when I go to the city manager with my plans, she'll let me talk to her.
Well, the last time we really looked at it was two thousand and one when we developed our initial stormwater master plan. And things have really changed since then as far as, you know, modeling and such. So we really need to take a look at that.
And I think we're getting ready to do streets, right? And we're, you know, we've got a new flood plan mapping on. I just would like to get a handle on.
Yeah, that's what we're, we're trying to incorporate those, see lower rise projections in our future replacements. So, you know, we don't want to replace a pipe and then ten years later have to come in, make it bigger. And also, the placement of the pipes matters a lot. So that's what we're working on.
And the other challenge in that is the, you know, you deal with the quantity issue, but then now you have to deal with the quality issue because we're being held, our feet are being held to the fire by Tallahassee. So.
You know, two thousand and one to now is a long time. It's sixteen years older on a system that's already sixty years old. So.
Well, we've amended, we've amended the plan internally for a long time, but we haven't kind of got the new full-blown strategy.
And then the cost projections of, you know, where we know we're looking at cost-wise out there. I mean, not to scare it away, but I think you need to know those things.
Yeah, two thousand and one, the constraints of the, or the added costs of all of the water quality issues aren't there. The monitoring, the, you know, all the training, the education and things like that.
Right.
Thank you. Any further questions? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing on agenda item fourteen, discuss take action on ordinance number eleven forty-five. And it's a second reading. Jim?
Ordinance number eleven forty-five, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Satellite Beach City Code, chapter two administration, section two dash two five three, computation of travel reimbursement for tipping increased to twenty percent, providing for severability, providing for conflict caused, and providing an effective date. It's a second reading of ordinance number eleven forty-five.
Motion to approve eleven forty-five on second reading.
I have a motion by Councilman Breimer. Does he have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Gibson. Any discussion from council? At this time, open up for public comment on agenda item fourteen. Here are none. Back to council. Lenore?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes. Motion passes and I'll close the public hearing. Okay, before we move on to fifteen, let me just make sure we got fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty to do and twenty-one. My recommendation right now, so I don't buzz through things, I'd like to take agenda item twenty-three. So, okay, clear from? Yeah. Okay. Discuss take action on the contract for city manager's benefits and compensation package. So on this, from the last time we met, we agreed on those compensations. Here is the agreement written up by our city attorney. It's been given to our city manager. She's agreed to it. And it's just us two put this in. So I'd like to just say, any questions concerning? Courtney, any questions from your end? Okay.
Well, I do have one. Just, Courtney, I know, because I remember when, when you were originally interviewing and all that sort of thing for this, this ICMA certification. Just kind of where are you at with all of that stuff?
That's, that's one of the actual changes, because we, we figured out, or I figured out, when I applied, I took the initial assessment. But I don't actually qualify to even start the process for another year.
Okay.
So we had to change that in the contract to make sure that I can complete it from the date that I'm eligible to.
Okay.
Because I had to have so many years of experience of being a city manager first before I could apply to, to get the certification.
So that's why we changed that language.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. At this time, open it up for public hearing on agenda item twenty-three. Here are none. Bring it back to council.
I just, I want to thank you for taking the initiative to do this because I think this was a step in the right direction. And I appreciate everything that Courtney does for us and for our city and for our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Courtney. Incredible job. I mean, people, when people from other cities and outside, other government officials say, don't lose her. I'm not a crazy nut.
But, you know, Pearson's still saying that he took credit for the training.
Courtney, thank you very much. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Yes.
I just laid a book for you.
Okay, I believe fifteen. Thank you very much. Sorry for bouncing around, Lenore. Discuss take action on resolution nine ninety.
Resolution number nine ninety, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, recognizing Florida City Government Week, October twenty-third to twenty-nine, two thousand and seventeen, and encouraging all citizens to support the celebration and corresponding activities. It's a reading of resolution number nine ninety.
Move to adopt resolution nine ninety.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. This time, open up for public hearing on agenda item fifteen. Here are none. Back to council. Any comments? Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item sixteen, resolution nine ninety-one.
Resolution number nine nine one, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, supporting legislation to provide long-term recurring and adequate state funding that is equitably distributed throughout the state for local government water resource and water quality improvement projects and infrastructure, including but not limited to projects that reduce nutrient and pollutant loading from wastewater sources, mitigate stormwater and flooding impacts, and increase available water resources and supplies. Directing city administration to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the Florida League of Cities, the Brevard County Legislative Delegation, and any other interested parties. Providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing an effective date. It's a reading of resolution number nine nine one.
Thank you.
Move to approve resolution number nine ninety-one.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Gibson. Open up for public input. Here are none. Back to council. Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to resolution nine ninety-two. Jim?
Resolution number nine nine two, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, supporting legislation that preserves local control of transportation planning, provides for more, a more equitable transportation funding formula between municipalities and counties, and provides for additional dedicated revenue options for municipal transportation infrastructure and transit projects. Directing city administration to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the Florida League of Cities, the Brevard County Legislative Delegation, and any other interested parties. Providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing an effective date. It's a reading of resolution number nine nine two.
Move to adopt resolution nine ninety-two.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Open up for public comment. Here are none. Back to council. Any? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Move on to agenda item eighteen, resolution nine nine three.
Resolution number nine nine three, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, supporting legislation to require certification for all recovery residences and recovery residence administrators to ensure that the vulnerable population in recovery is protected and that recovery residence administrators have the competencies necessary to respond appropriately to the needs of residents. Directing city administration to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the Florida League of Cities, the Brevard County Legislative Delegation, and any other interested parties. Providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. It's a reading of resolution number nine nine three.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution number nine ninety-three.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gibson, second by Councilman Breimer. Discussion from council? Here are none. Open up public comment on agenda item eighteen, resolution nine nine three. Here are none. Back to council. Lenore?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to agenda nineteen, discuss take action on resolution nine nine four.
Resolution number nine nine four, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, supporting legislation reforming the communication services tax in a manner that is revenue neutral, providing for broad and equitable tax base, providing for enhanced stability and reliability as an important revenue source for local government, and providing a uniform method for taxing communication services in Florida. Directing city administration to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the Florida League of Cities, the Brevard County Legislative Delegation, and any other interested parties. Providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. It's a reading of resolution number nine nine four.
Thank you. Have a motion?
I'd move to make a motion to adopt resolution number nine nine five.
Nine nine four.
Nine, oh, we on five or four?
Four.
Nine nine four.
Nine nine four.
A motion by Councilwoman Gibson?
I want to have.
Second.
Second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion? Here are none. Open up for public comment on agenda item nineteen. Here are none. Back to council. Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item twenty, resolution number nine nine five. Jim?
Resolution number nine nine five, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, opposing legislative efforts to impede the constitutional right Florida's citizens have enjoyed for nearly fifty years to govern themselves under municipal home rule powers, opposing the legislature's persistent intrusion into local finances, which are necessary to provide financial stability and essential services uniquely required by municipal residents and local businesses. Directing city administration to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the Florida League of Cities, the Brevard County Legislative Delegation, and any other interested parties. Providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. It's a reading of resolution number nine nine five.
These, these resolutions that we're reading are basically the policy committee recommendations from the Florida League of Cities. And this is by far the most important one of these that we're reading. So I'll make a, a motion to approve resolution nine ninety-five.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Further discussion from council? Here are none. Open up for public comment on, Jim, the item twenty. Back to council. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item twenty-one, resolution nine nine six. Notice has been the fastest part of the agenda.
Resolution number nine nine six, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, urging all members of the Florida Legislature to oppose legislation that will restrict or eliminate community redevelopment agencies. Directing city administration to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the Florida League of Cities, the Brevard County Legislative Delegation, and any other interested parties. Providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. It's a reading of resolution number nine nine six.
Thank you. Have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Discussion from council? Here are none. Open up for public comment on agenda item twenty-one, resolution nine nine six. Here are none. Back to council. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes. Motion passes. If my calculations are right here, we're on the number